Okay. So, good morning, everybody, and welcome to this meeting of Boston Borough Council's Planning Committee. My name is councillor David Middleton, I am the chairman of this committee, and councillor David Scoot is my vice-chairman. Before we move to the agenda, I would invite our officers supporting this meeting to introduce themselves. Lisa.
Lisa Davis, senior planning lawyer and legal adviser to the committee.
Phil Norman, Assistant Director for Planning.
Nick Atkinson, Development Management Lead.
Ian Carrington, Senior Planning Officer.
Thank you. Moving on to our housekeeping rules. I would like to remind everyone in attendance this morning that this meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. Restroom facilities are available on this floor for the ladies, and halfway down the main stairwell for gentlemen. In the event of a fire alarm sounding, officers will escort everyone to the nearest safety point in the rear car park. Please ensure when you are addressing this meeting that you do so through the microphone system at all times. Please also ensure that you speak into the microphone as closely and as clearly as possible. Members of the public are free to leave the meeting at any time, and our planning support officers will escort you downstairs. And finally, please be advised that abuse or intimidation of any kind will not be tolerated. Any disturbance will result in the meeting being adjourned. Anyone who is deemed to breach these requirements will be warned and asked to refrain. And if the behaviour persists, they will be required to leave the meeting. We will now move on to receive apologies for absence and notification of any substitutes.
Thank you, Chairman. Apologies have been received from councillor Dorian, with councillor Azad substituting. And we also have further apologies from councillor Paypoint, councillor Savickian and councillor Sharp.
Thank you. To sign the minutes of the last meeting held on the 6th of May, do I have committed agreement to sign these, please? Before we move to individual declarations of interest in respect of any item on this agenda, I will ask Lisa to give the standing declarations.
Thank you, Chairman. For public information, I confirm that standing declarations of interest will be recorded within the minutes for this meeting for all members of this committee, who are also members of the South East Lincolnshire Joint Strategic Planning Committee and representatives of the internal drainage boards.
Thank you. Does any member of this committee have any further declaration of interest to make in respect of any item on this agenda, please? I for one have to declare that I have been lobbied by different people through email and directly, but it will not change or affect my decision-making here today. Is there anybody else wants to say they've been... Councillor Bedford?
Sorry, Chairman. Yeah, I've had one email lobby, but obviously it won't affect any judgements.
Yes, I've had the email as well, but it doesn't make any... I've had the email as well, but nothing, nothing will predetermine me.
Woodley?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm in the same position. I think we've all had emails. I assume we've had anyway. It doesn't affect my decision-making. I always look at everything objectively.
You have to listen carefully.
You have to listen carefully. It doesn't affect my judgment-making. Don't interrupt, please. I'm speaking. Thank you. No, you be quiet now. I have received information like everybody else, but I look at the planning documents in the meeting, and I make up my mind during the meeting, having heard all the arguments one way or another. So I have no mind at the present minute, Chairman.
Thank you. Can you all take your seats, please? Can you take your seats, please? I'll just remind everybody again, please get close to your microphones when you're speaking. To receive any written questions from members of the public.
There are none, Chairman.
That concludes the preliminary items, and we will now move to part two of the agenda and address the planning application for determination. The main item of business today is planning application B230379, which is on page forty-one of the agenda. And before I ask our development manager, Mr. Nick Atkinson, to present this report, our legal officer will address the committee.
Thank you, Chairman. Following the previous committee on the 6th of June 2025, the council has taken independent legal advice on this application. In that context, officers have taken the decision to bring back the application to be considered afresh by the committee. This reason, the reason for this is to ensure that a robust and defendable decision is taken, and any risk of challenge in respect of the final decision is minimised. Officers and indeed members will beware of significant public interest in the application. Indeed, members may well have been lobbied. This is perfectly normal. Officers are also aware that a number of procedural concerns have been raised in respect of the application. I would remind members that your role here today is to consider the material planning considerations of the application and to judge it on its own merits. Your officers are of the view that there are no procedural reasons why this application cannot be heard and determined today. If any third party has any procedural concerns, they can be raised in the usual manner through the council's corporate complaint procedure or by a legal challenge.
Thank you, Lisa. The development manager, Mr. Nick Atkinson, will now present his report.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, members. So this first agenda item is application B230379, which is land east of Gasefield Road at Fishtoft, Boston. And it's for the construction of eight to nine dwellings and associated infrastructure, which includes drainage and open space provision. Obviously, Lisa has just explained why the application's been brought back, but just to remind you all, members, that the application is essentially before you, following a call-in request having been made by a local ward member. The reasons for that are set out within the report before you, but for clarity, they primarily relates to the number and density of dwellings proposed, concerns relating to the access arrangements, the design of dwellings, impact upon neighbouring amenity and flood-drainage impacts. Just before we get into the main presentation, there has been another update report published for this item, hopefully a copy which you should have. It was published last week. Essentially, this details a number of matters that have been raised since the completion of the main report, including the council's lack of a five-year housing land supply, noting the receipt of a local petition, correspondence from Historic England, which does not object to the proposal, and correspondence from local residents. With the exception of the five-year housing land supply, no new material planning considerations have been introduced. The update deals in detail with each issue, but in summary, the matters raised do not alter the recommendation I set out in the report before you. I'll just run through a few slides just to familiarise yourselves with the site. So this first slide is just a satellite view showing the village of Fishtoft here in the bottom right-hand corner. You can make out the application site is this parcel of land just to the south-east of the village. Obviously, you can see it's an agricultural field, but this slide hopefully also just gives you a little bit of context as to the setting of the settlement and its relationship to Boston itself. And again, just a slightly zoomed-in view, again, as you can see, it is an agricultural field at the present time. And again, you can see the site's relationship to the settlement. As always, the location plan is, so the application site is shown in red. So here we have the full extent of the application site itself, and you can also see the proposed point of access on to Gasefield Road. Probably just a few points to note from the report, obviously the nearest neighbouring properties that are referred to are obviously these along the western side of the site. This is Gasefield Road itself, and obviously within the report itself, there's reference to Fishtoff Manor, listed building, which is this property just to the north. Reference is made within the report to a proportion of the application site being allocated within the local plan. This is an extract of that, so this area here that's hashed in red with the reference FIS046, this is the site allocation area within the local plan. It doesn't cover the entirety of the site, but it covers a significant portion of the northern area. The proposed layout. So again, single points of access into the site. Houses are predominantly based off a main spine road that runs through the site with a number of elements and arms coming off it. You can see here, the area blue, that's the attenuation drainage pond that is proposed. So again, a fairly standard layout for the site. This next plan shows some of the green space and the green infrastructure that's proposed through. Predominantly, the largest area again is around the attenuation basin, but you can also see pockets of green space located throughout the site. Drainage layout. Again, the main sort of form of the drainage is the attenuation basin, the suds, which all the suds will sort of link into that. There is then a pipe which would pipe the water from the attenuation basement to an open drainage channel, which is approximately a hundred metres east of the site. This next plan shows again land drainage. What you can make out around the perimeter of the site is this green line that is essentially the suds. Reference is made in the report to an intercepted drain, a French drain, and that is the blue line, turquoise line that you can see, which primarily runs along the northern boundary of the site, and then comes down the western boundary of the site, being the boundaries closest to the existing properties. The landscaping plant, so again, you can see again some of the trees planted around and some of the green infrastructure throughout the site itself. Just a few examples of the street scene. So this is in theory how the properties would look if the application were to be approved. Just a selection of varying house types, I haven't included every single one because that would be quite an extensive list, but again, just a few examples of the design of the houses and how they would look again if this application were to be approved. So just a few slides just to kind of give you a bit of context for those of you who don't know Fishtoft. This is looking, this is looking south along Gasefield Road itself. So again, you can see the width of the road, the nature of the road. Again, looking north along Gasefield Road back towards the main body of the village itself. And again, you can start to see some of the properties located near to the application site. Again, there's reference in the report to the scout hut that you can see there on the left-hand side of this photograph. And we've just highlighted here, this is approximately where the proposed access point would be into the site. And again, just remember, it's a single point of access into the site. Existing scout land, which again is referred to within the report, which will be retained. Just a few views from the actual application site itself. So this is the green field, the green site here, this is the application site. This is looking north from the access point. You can make out the nearest neighbouring residential properties on that western boundary. And just as a point of highlight, you can't necessarily fully make it out, but again, Fishtoff Manor, the listed building which is referred to within the report, is obviously where that arrow points to. So this is from further within side the south, looking southwest. Again, Gasefield Road and the properties along that western boundary are those that you can see clearly there. The, again, middle of the site looking towards the northwest corner. Again, along the northern boundary of the site. So again, this is where Fishtoff Manor would be located, and you can again start to see some properties within the village itself set a bit further back. And this is looking east over the expanses of open countryside and agricultural land that was shown on the previous location plan. Again, just a site history showing the allocation and showing other allocations within the village itself. Obviously, the report makes reference to the fact that the site has two elements to it. There's the site allocation which covers predominantly the northern part of the site, but actually much of the southern part of the site as well has also been covered by a previously and still extended planning consent. This is the sort of site history which shows the approvals that have been granted. So this is in theory what we've already approved as an authority, and that is still, there's the two planning permissions that are referred to. They are both still extended planning consents for the time being, and I think they don't lapse until November. So that is a material consideration for this application. And again, just a bit of a comparative between, on the left-hand side, you can see what is proposed through this current application versus on the right-hand side, what has previously been approved. So again, when we talk about the planning history, the site allocation, the fallback that exists, this is what we're referring to in the report. So that's hopefully a bit of a useful visual for yourselves in terms of comparing what we've already proved versus what is now proposed. And again, just a bit of a comparative. So on the left-hand side is the site allocation within the local plan versus on the right-hand side, this is the additional, this is the application site now being sought. So again, when we refer to the fact that there's a slightly larger area, it is, and it's predominantly this bulk, the southeast corner of the site, but again, noting the previous approval. So it's just a bit of a comparative between principle largely established through the site allocation versus what's being proposed today. And again, this is just a little bit of a sort of an overlay of the two, trying to give a little bit of a sort of comparison. And again, previous schemes, remember, just again to iterate, so again, allocation on the left, in the middle, previously approved scheme, and on the right, also a sort of further approved scheme, which sort of incorporates a little bit of this area additionally down to the southeast corner. So again, just a bit of context for how the site has developed from the local plan to location through to the past approvals that have been granted. So members, I won't run through each section of the report in detail before you, because obviously it's quite a lengthy and extensive report. But I just wanted to run through some of what we consider to be the main considerations. Firstly, in relation to the principle of the development, as we said, a large part of the application site is located within the local plan for housing development under policy eleven of the local plan, with an allocation for forty-five dwellings. Whilst the current application site is larger than this allocation, again, as you've seen from the slides, it's important to note that the larger area is predominantly covered by two extended planning permissions that have previously been granted by the council for residential development. As such, in the opinion of officers, it can be taken that the principle of the residential development of the site is acceptable and is largely established through the allocation in the local plan and the two previous planning consents that have been granted. Question before you members therefore largely comes down to matters of numbers, design and consideration of all other material relevant considerations. In relation to housing numbers, any allocation within a local plan sets a target number of houses to be developed. And whilst this should be our starting point, it's important to note that an allocation is not prescriptive and does not prevent high numbers from being proposed and approved, so long as the development overall complies in all other regards with the requirements of the local plan. Therefore, simply proposing a high number of dwellings and an allocation does not represent or reasonably warrant the refusal of any planning application. Officers have set out in the report before you why it's considered that the density of the proposal is considered to be acceptable. And whilst the density may not mirror that of all of the immediate neighbours in Gasefield Road, it is reflective of more modern developments that have taken place in the settlement, and as such would not be at odds with the existing built form and settlement pattern of Fishtoft. And therefore, in the opinion of officers, would not result in harm being caused to the character and/or appearance of the settlement. In relation to design, in response to initial concerns that were raised by the case officer, the applicant has worked positively and proactively with the council to revise and amend the scheme that is now before you and to address those concerns. While some of the changes have individually small or minor cumulatively, it resulted in an overall much better and organic scheme, which is of a suitably suitable quality of design and layout that would not be visually harmful, and again, in the opinion of officers, responds well to the locality. The development would also benefit from a scheme of landscaping, which again will help soften, further soften the development and the visual impact of it to a satisfactory manner. In regards to neighbouring amenity, whilst the development would change the outlook for neighbouring dwellings, it's important to note a few points. A, no property has a right to review in planning legislation. And B, the principle of the residential development of the site is established as we've previously discussed. So in the opinion of officers, this does not represent a justified reason for the refusal of this application. Separation distances would exist from the dwellings proposed to existing neighbouring properties to ensure that there is no adverse or harmful impacts arising from direct facing, overlooking or loss of privacy. And neither would the development result in any loss of light to any existing neighbouring dwelling. As such, in terms of amenity, whilst some harm would arise, the extent of this is not considered to be significant, demonstrable or unacceptable. And where any harm would arise, in the opinion of officers, this would be significantly outweighed by the benefits of the scheme through the provision of housing, including affordable housing for the borough, particularly given the council's currently published five-year housing land supply and housing shortfall. One of the main matters of contention that's been raised with this application is in regards to flood risk and drainage. The site is acknowledged to be within a flood zone three, although more favourable than other sites within Fishtoft, hence its allocation within the local plan. Following a extensive consultation exercise, there are no objections raised to the proposal from any statutory consultees regarding flooding, subject to further mitigation measures, which includes roadside swale, network of underground drains leading to an attenuation basin by any consultees, and that basin would be maintained by the Witham fourth IDB, who have confirmed that it has existing capacity to absorb the development. As you've seen from a previous slide, it's also proposed to install an interceptor drain along the northern and western boundaries with neighbouring properties, which will help capture surface water in this area and ease an existing problem that already exists for residents. Therefore, it is considered that the proposed development can be satisfactorily serviced by appropriate drainage infrastructure, which would be secured through condition, and as such, the development would not result in an increased flood risk at the site or to any surrounding land. In terms of highway safety, the application has been supported by a series of plans and documents which demonstrate that the surrounding highway network is capable of absorbing the level of traffic generated by the scheme from both a highway safety and capacity perspective, with no demonstrable harm being identified. This view is supported by the Highway Authority, which raises no objections to the proposal. Conditions are recommended to overcome concerns raised by the Fire and Rescue Service, although it's noted that the access roads would be constructed to the standard required by the Highway Authority in terms of their design guidance. In regards to affordable housing, following the submission of a viability appraisal by the applicant, which has been subject of an independent review by officers, the scheme has been demonstrated that overall a lower level of planning contributions than that has been requested, which is considered to be reasonable. In this regard, officers recommend that the provision of 20% on-site affordable housing, which is in line with the local plan requirement, is accepted. And a financial contribution of 400,000 towards education, provision and healthcare is also accepted. This is considered to be a proportionate planning gain in this instance for the reasons that I set out in the report before you. In regards, in regards to heritage assets, obviously, this has been another matter that's been raised of concern, predominantly in relation to the impact of the development upon the nearby Fishtough Manor. Again, hopefully you'll see in the report, it is acknowledged that there would be some harm that would arise to the manor. However, the extent of this harm is considered to be less than substantial. Where any harm would arise, again, in the opinion of officers, the extent of the harm is sufficiently minor and will be outweighed by the wider benefits of the scheme, again, being through the provision of housing to address the borough's current housing shortfall. And this view is supported by both the council's conservation officer and Historic England, neither which raise any objections to the proposal. And in regards to biodiversity net gain, the applicant has supplied sufficient information and assessments to the council to demonstrate that the scheme is capable of delivering the required biodiversity net gain, which would be secured through condition. Although again, members, due to the age of the application, it's not technically mandatory that this application does demonstrate it, but the application applicant has demonstrated that nonetheless. So in conclusion, members, overall, when taking all matters into account, the principle of the residential development of the site is acceptable and established through both the local plan's allocation and also the two previously approved and extended planning approvals. Furthermore, the development would deliver benefits to the provision of housing in the borough and also the provision of affordable housing on a site that is allocated for such within the local plan. And this is particularly the case, given the council's recently published five-year housing land supply and the resultant housing shortfall which exists, which is a significant material consideration and factor in the determination of this planning application. Officers are of the opinion that the amount of development proposed can be accommodated within the site and without resulting in significant or demonstrable harm being caused to the locality, to neighbouring amenity, to the natural or historic environment, subject to the imposition of conditions as further mitigation. In the opinion of officers, notwithstanding the identified areas where there is a slight conflict with the local plan, the development is considered to comply with the development plan as a whole. Furthermore, furthermore, there are no material considerations to justify the refusal of the application in the opinion of officers. Where any harm may arise, this is not considered to be significant and would be outweighed by the clear and identified benefits of the scheme. The lack of housing, five-year housing land supply, as per the supplementary report, provides further support for the grant of permission, given the tilted balance that now comes into play and the significant way that this is afforded. Therefore, members, the application is recommended for approval, subject to conditions and subject to the completion of the section 106 to secure affordable housing provision and a financial contribution. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Nick. Now we have four speakers for this application and supporting documentation provided by the speakers is provided on each placement at this table. Our first speaker is Mr Ian Scott, who is speaking in objection to the application. Just before you come up, Mr Scott, do you feel well enough to do your own? You're happy? Okay. If you can come to the table, then please. And please remain seated at the table when you have finished your representation. Yeah, take your time, Mr Scott. If you want to stop, that's okay. Just have a pause and a deep breath.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks very much. Right, page 26 and 27. The Suds design is dictated by the Government's Syria Sustainable Drainage Manual, section C85 and E2412. All the comments I make in the report are based on those requirements. Page nine, in this site, if the IDB drain level rises above the attenuation basin level, a flap valve stops backflow. All water discharge stops from the attenuation basin. Page 11 shows a good design for a sustainable drainage attenuation pond. This is not Fishtoughed. The bottom of the pond is above the IDB ditch highest water level. The water discharge is never interrupted or reduced. The standard pond volume calculations are accurate in that case. Page 12, this is the failed undersized Fishtough design of the attenuation pond. The entire pond is below the IDB ditch highest water level. The water discharge stops flowing. It is now a detention pond and keeps filling up until rain stops. This pond must be sized for days of rainfall. Along the wash, this is recorded up to five days rain or more. Page 16 and 17, these afforders are the full Witham fourth drains. The Witham IDB network exists from Boston to Wainfleet, from the seabank inland about five kilometres. They apply to Fishtoughed. The published FRA only excludes the hard surface area, only includes the hard surface areas. The swales are absent, the boundary drain is absent, the attenuation pond calculations falsely assume a continuous discharge of water. When the IDB drain is full, discharge stops. The pond calculations must include three to five days of rainfall or more. The pond must be at least three times larger than you see in the plans. A confirmation by B16317, plant size of pond was one tenth of the site area. After two years' village flooding, the new overflow pond is a third of the site area. Page seven and eight, it is mandatory to complete a sequential test. Existing property flooding has not been assessed. Other sites have not been compared for reduced flood risk. Nothing has been done. This proposal fails. Next, the exception test of the FRA. Existing flood mitigation has not been investigated. The Suds pond is undersized and fails requirement. It ignores the mandatory government design guidelines of the Syria report. The current FRA publication, January 2025, is incomplete and inaccurate for surface rainwater flood mitigation. Nothing has been completed for this proposal. The planning department presumed presented manipulated data for typical densities of housing in Fishtoughed. The northern site was claimed at 20, but it's actually 12. A western site was claimed at 20, but it's between 30 and 16. One could be a discrepancy, two or more is a, an intentional, an intention to mislead this committee. Yep, that'll do.
Thank you, Mr Scott. Has anybody wished to seek any clarification from Mr Scott? Council Bedford.
Thanks, Jim. Mr Scott, once again, you've got pictures in your messages saying that about flooding and so on on your page seven, the house and the gardens, et cetera. Where exactly are these? You say they're examples of what could happen. I appreciate that. Because I've been down there and I can't find that house at all. And the other one is on page 17. You've got a main IDB trunk drain full. Again, where is that, please? So this is north in theory on the heavy land. East of.
Less than three kilometres from the coast in the same band of land, the same elevation of land.
Right. Thank you.
Yeah, would you like to come back, Nick?
Yeah, it's just, just on one point. I won't go over the the drainage grounds because they're, they're covered within the the report. And obviously you can see what officers' views are with regards to sequential tests and exception tests. It was more just a sort of comment from the speaker about, about the density. A, I fundamentally disagree with what they've said, but B, I also take a little bit of exception to the suggestion that we're trying to manipulate data or mislead the committee. So I'm afraid that's, that's not a comment that I'm afraid, I believe we should, allow me to speak, please. That's, that's not a comment that I believe, I think should just go on. Well, we, the officers have made that assessment. We do stand by the information in the report. And any suggestions that were purposely trying to mislead committee, I'm afraid are completely inappropriate. Thank you, Chair.
Is anybody else anything to say? Thank you, Mr Scott. Would you return to your seat, please? Second speaker is Fiona Beddoes, did I get that right? Near enough. Who is speaking on behalf of the applicants, Gleeson's, and she's speaking in support of the application. Can you please remain in your seat once you have concluded your presentation?
Good afternoon, Chair and members. My name is Fiona Beddoes and I'm a land manager for the Yorkshire East region of Gleeson Homes. As you may be aware, Gleeson Homes provide affordable, high-quality homes for those on low to middle incomes. Gleeson specialise in the provision of entry-level housing, typically for first-time buyers, giving customers like myself the chance to afford to buy their own home. Gleeson takes special care in determining their selling prices, ensuring that they are affordable to as much of the local market as possible. All developments are priced to provide homes with an entry point, which can be afforded by a couple in full-time employment and on the national living wage. Gleeson's homes are a traditional build with low maintenance and high energy efficiency. The proposal before you is for the development of 89 homes. These new homes and families will generate much-needed income into the area, creating a more sustainable community, supporting the local parish, primary school and scout group. There are no objections raised from statutory consultees in relation to highways, heritage, contamination and drainage. Gleeson Homes have worked hard with the planning officer to try to achieve a scheme acceptable to the council in order to bring much-needed, low-cost homes to this area. Multiple steps have been taken to enhance the design and street scenes, as well as maintaining a minimum separation distance of at least 20 metres, 25 metres in some case, between the new homes and those existing along Gasefield Road. Some concerns have been raised by residents in regard to surface water flooding to properties along Gasefield Road. Proposed attenuation has been designed to accommodate all surface water runoff, including one-in-100-year-plus climate change events, without flooding any buildings. The scheme has been further modified to include an interceptor drain running along the boundary with neighbouring properties. The new proposals will not increase flood risk in the area and the drainage system has been designed to ensure this. The attenuation is expected to fully retain any additional surface water runoff. Following negotiations with the council, it is proposed that Gleeson will provide section 106 contributions, including nearly 59,000 towards healthcare, just over 341,000 towards education and 5,000 towards travel plan monitoring. In addition, 20% affordable housing is proposed. Moreover, a local equipped play area has been proposed, which will be an important recreational space for young children. Biodiversity will be majorly enhanced through soft landscaping and planting. It is our hope that especially in these difficult times, a predominantly low-cost home ownership scheme is supported by members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you, Ms Beddoes. Would any committee member like to ask for some clarification? Council Woodley?
Thank you, Jim. I'm not sure if I'm allowed to answer, but it goes back to page 47 and the scout hut, which is going to be cut off from its. I'm allowed to ask that question now because it.
Sorry, it's not clarification of what she's just said. If you want to ask clarification of officers, then you can do whenever I'm spoken. She's not spoken about that.
Not going to allow that.
She didn't mention anything about the scout, so you'll need to clarify it for officers.
Yeah, Council Cliff, please bring that forward later. I've just got one thing I'd like to query. The drainage aspect of this development, this scheme, is something that is a real highlight and up for discussion continually. You do these schemes continually. Do you have your own in-house people that design these schemes? Or do you go out to people who have a wealth of experience in doing these schemes?
So we always go to, out to external consultants for a number of schemes that we have across our business and we rely on their PI.
And would these people be local who understand the land and the landfall in this Lincolnshire area?
That's absolutely correct. Yes, we, we use a number of different consultants depending on the area who have their own specialism.
Thank you. I'm afraid, oh.
Just going back to the site map, the width of the roads to the housing developments of 5.5, would that allow for a car to be parked in that road and for another vehicle to pass safely by it without man in the curbs or pavements? I take it you've had experience of previous building?
I'm not sure whether that is a.
No, you didn't, you didn't raise any of that in your.
Unfortunately, that wasn't raised.
Yay.
If you want to ask it of officers later, please bring it forward.
I apologize. This is my first ever planning.
Don't worry. It's a learning curve, believe you. So thank you, Ms Beddoes. Would you return to your seat? Our third speaker is Parish Councilor Helen Crawford, the chairperson of Fishtough Parish Council, and speaking on behalf of the parish council. Councilor Crawford, please remain seated once you have concluded your presentation.
Thank you very much. I'm very pleased someone's mentioned the scout hut. Section 5.5 of the Planning Committee report discusses representations from Fishtough Scouts, stating that they request a crossing over the access road to the development in the interest of safety. What the Scouts actually say about this road in their representations in December 2023 is, we feel that this will have a detrimental effect on our ongoing use of the field for numerous scout activities it has been used for over the years. They go on to explain that due to the lack of regular. to the lack of regular public transport and amenities in Fistoft, occupants of the new properties will need at least one car per household, and that the road will be busy at just the time when they are using the hut for their meetings and accessing their field for activities. They ask whether there is another place this road can be positioned to remove the risk to the scouts and their families. I can find nowhere in the documentation that this question has been considered. They go on to say that if there is no other place for the road, then they would like to see some form of pedestrianised crossing to enable a safer crossing of the road. Now, the scouts have used this field adjacent to their hut for over forty years. One side of it is the hut, and as you saw on the screen, round the other sides are high hedges. This has provided the scouts with a high level of protection and privacy while pursuing their outdoor activities. Placing the access road at this location raises serious safety issues for the children and will curtail the activities of the group. There are few enough activities for the youth of Boston. I do not regard this as a benefit either to Fistoff Village or the wider borough of Boston. I would reiterate their question, is there no other place that this road can be positioned? Perhaps further down Cut End Road? Whilst this would still reduce the area of grass available to the scouts, it would at least keep the children safe. The alternate option of a crossing is not sufficient on its own. The prospect of a child having to cross the road at night simply to use the toilet facilities is concerning. If the committee is not minded to alter the position of the access road, I would request that you implement a section 106 agreement to provide toilets and other facilities on the grassy area for the use of the scouts plus a pelican crossing, so that all of those who need to cross between the scout hut and the grass not only feel safe but are safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does any member of the committee, any questions? councillor Broton?
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick one. What hours do the, hours do the scouts meet and how often?
The scouts have formal meetings three times a week, Monday, Tuesday and Thursday, starting at six fifteen and finishing at nine o'clock. They have informal meetings, obviously on the grass area. They do camping, they have car boot sales, five-a-side football, et cetera.
councillor Evans?
Thank you, Chairman. Can I just say, obviously vehicles are going to be going past this, but they're not exactly going to be doing wild speeds, judging from the position. Surely a severe speed bump at each end of that access road would make things an awful lot safer.
You would hope so. I've seen people well speed over speed bumps, I'm afraid.
Yeah.
councillor Evans?
Could a condition be put in?
If you want to ask that to the officers later, please do.
Okay, I thought it was mentioned there. Sorry.
Don't worry. councillor Woodley?
Thank you, Chairman. Well, obviously child safety is very, very important here and we must make sure, we've got a historical situation where we got a hut.
councillor Woodley, can you get a bit closer to your mic, please?
Not this one. The problem is, historically, we've got a connection here. We've got a recreation area and we've got a hut and we're going to put quite a busy road, I think, through this. That's where the problem is. So I think that it's, it's something that has to be conditioned in its development if we're going to, I suppose, what's my question? Do you think it should be conditioned? Yes, right. Do you think that there's a safety issue here?
Oh, that's, that's my main concern is the safety of the children, without a doubt.
Yes, I think that's correct. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. councillor Broton?
Just coming back to the scouts again. How many are there in the group?
I'm afraid I do not have the information on that.
And is the, obviously with these, if this gets passed today, is the capacity to increase the numbers as well? Will there be?
I do not have the information on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Crawford. If you'll return to your seat, please. Our final speaker is councillor Helen Staples, who has called this application to committing. Councillor Staples, please remain seated once you have concluded your presentation.
Thank you, Chair. For over five years, residents of Fistoff Village have been deeply concerned at the prospect of the land in the application site being developed. In the southeast, East Links local development plan, it states forty properties. Now, we fully accept that sixty-nine were passed by this previous administration, but we now have a hundred percent increase in the initial forty to now eighty-nine. So my concern here is a material consideration of density. I feel the site design is overbearing, given the rise of land compared to the existing built development. The proposed properties are going to be built one point five metres on top of the height of the land already, so that's going to make, make it considerably higher than Gasefield Road. I worry about land that's been, I need reassurance really from officers or from Fiona Beddoes this morning, that land that is raised artificially for building, does this have the potential in the future to sink and cause subsidence? Because then that devalues the properties that are being built, in my opinion. Fistoft is already in flood zone three, as has been spoken about earlier. Household insurance premiums are escalating. We ourselves were subject to a hundred percent increase this year. Will residents in first-time buyer properties be able to afford this insurance? I remain unconvinced about the drainage and the fact that it's adequate, given the heavy clay soil. The interceptor drains are known not to be good in this, in this condition and I, and again, I would like reassurance from Fiona Beddoes that they have actually listened to the advice given. The configuration of the roads within the proposed site indicate to me that the rainwater will drain down onto Gasefield Road. There is a blind ditch with photographic evidence in your pack, I believe, on page seven, which actually is, is, is not functioning. You've seen the photographs of properties that have been flooded along Gasefield Road. I think, I'm not going to mention where the property is, the opposite side of the road, it's unfair to the resident, but this is a regular occurrence. So councillors, what has Fistoff got to offer residents of the families of these prospective homes? Well, we have a beautiful eleventh-century church, we've got a pub, we've got a football club and we've got the fifth Boston Scouts, whose amenity ground, as my parish council colleague has already said, is being chopped in half, giving certain, well, desperate safety issues for the children. Anglian Water Sewage Works, well, don't we all just love them as councillors, three hundred and fifty tankers per week. That's weekend work as well. That proposes a safety issue. So what has the proposed development got to offer residents of Fistoff Village? Well, we've heard about the 106 agreement. I don't think that's going to benefit the residents of Fistoft. There's going to be noise during construction, additional traffic and the ruination of a semi-rural setting, which our, which our village provides, prides itself on. Sorry, I just can't find anything positive about this development. The only thing I will say, councillors, obviously we have to accept that there will be building on there. I would ask you this morning, if you're not minded to refuse this development, then you go back to the previous development, which is lesser and perhaps more favourable to the, to my residents in Fistoft. But I would prefer a refusal. Thank you very much.
Would anybody like to ask for clarification?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. councillor Staples, you mentioned in your report that you've got heavy clay soil in Fistoft. Do you have some documentary evidence on this or where's your information coming from, please?
The fact that, like you councillor Riley, I'm also farming background and it's land that isn't double cropping, it's very heavy clay soil and interceptor drains are, if you do your homework, are known not to be very good with heavy soil, heavy clay soil. And that's my information. Thank you.
Anybody else, please? Okay, I think at this point, councillor, you have to leave the room. So, Mr. Atkins, do you have any comments to make in respect of any of the representation received?
No, just, well, just a sort of couple of points, really. In relation to the sort of comments from councillor Staples, obviously she mentioned density. I think the figure quoted was just that from the site allocation in the local plan. And I would just urge members to just be mindful that what we've very clearly said here is that the density can't just be considered in terms of what the local plan allocation is, because actually it covers a slightly wider area and that area is also covered by two extent planning permissions. So the extent planning permissions are a material consideration that you do have to take into account. So it's just be mindful that if you just simply focus on the site allocation number, A, that's not prescriptive in the local plan anyway, so you can go above or below that, but that would be ignoring the extent planning permissions on site, which I would urge you not to, not to do. I think there were some comments also raised, I think it was a question actually about the, the width of the, the public highway. And again, just, just to sort of clarify that the internal roads are being, or would be, should I say, constructed to the highway standards of Lincolnshire County Council, so it would be in accordance with their design guide in terms of appropriate width. So that would mean that you wouldn't get people having to mount pavements to, to sort of drive past. And again, there's, there's, in terms of highway safety, just again, just to reiterate that this has been subject of an extensive assessment by the applicants. This has been subject of extensive consultation with the highway authority and there are no objections to this on a, on a highway safety grounds. And just on flooding, I think again, reference has been made to existing flooding that's taking place. You know, we note that it's, it's not technically the responsibility of the, of an applicant to come along and resolve existing issues. Ironic in this case, that is actually what the applicant is proposing to do by the interceptor drain. But the question you have to ask yourself is that whilst the site may flood or an area may flood, will this development actually add to that flooding? And in the view of all the statutory consultees and the opinion of officers, based upon all the information before us, all information has been put together by the applicant themselves, which is very detailed. All the information has been put to us from objectors, has been put back to the LLFA. That's not just sort of current submissions, that's information that's been provided all the way through. Just a double, treble, quadruple check whether or not that changes the lead local flood authority's views and their position still remains that, subject to the condition in the report before you, they have no objections to the scheme in respect of concerns about this site flooding. So it's not the respond, don't, don't doubt that there may be flood events take place at the moment. It's, it's not the duty of the applicant to resolve it. Hopefully the interceptor drain will actually do that, which is above and beyond what we would normally require an applicant to do. But there is no empirical evidence before us that suggests that this scheme would increase the risk of flooding at the site or elsewhere. I think we had a couple of queries about scouts, so I'll pass over to Ian, just very, very brief from that, if I may, Chair, just to address some of those points.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, members. Just about the scout hut. I think it's quite important to understand what is proposed. There would be, there's quite a large area of land, as you've seen from the photograph in Mr. Atkinson's introduction, which is available for use by the scouts and that's hemmed in by those very tall fir trees. There would be a small section of that immediately next to the scout hut taken, but all the rest of that land would remain for the use of the scouts. In terms of safety, the application proposes that that land would have a fence, which obviously entrance would be controlled by the scouts themselves. It would be a traditional Lincolnshire post and rail fence, which would segregate that land off. And there would be, in fact, a crossing. A crossing is actually included in the plans and that's been discussed with the county highways team. It is at the moment a tactile crossing and a condition actually secures that its exact position is subject to further conversations with officers and county highways to make sure that that crossing is safe. So the bottom line is that the scout hut itself, the hedges, the great majority of the land, all of that would remain for the use by the scouts. Now, members have raised in, in, in conversation this morning, the possibility of an alternative form of crossing. The one that's in there with highways approval is a tactile crossing. I think somebody mentioned could we have a pelican crossing. Other forms are available. I think from officers' point of view, we would be happy to discuss that further with the applicants, with the highway authority and indeed with the scouts. Members have also raised traffic calming. Again, I'm reluctant without talking directly with the highways experts, Chairman, to actually go nap on this, but I think I'm able to say we'd be happy to have further conversations to make sure that everybody is satisfied that the measures taken to protect the safety of the scouts and indeed scout masters are properly taken and the right things are put into place when we build. Hope that helps clarify, Chairman.
Excuse me, could we see those pictures again, please, while we're talking about?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We're just working on that. So that's the scout area, actually from the outside on the road. I'm going to skip forward a few. And that is the point where the access would be, which is basically adjacent to the scout hut. So that little bit of the, the hedging and obviously the land behind it would be lost. But the main area is this one here and that's taken from pretty well standing next to the scout hut. So there would be a fence a few, a few yards in front of where the photographer was standing and he'd basically be standing on the, the edge of the road. But all of that land basically would remain. It would be fenced off and we can, as I say, there is already a safe crossing, safe as far as LCC highways are concerned, in place. But officers are happy to look at the exact nature of that crossing and whether any additional traffic calming is needed. I think it was yourself, Chairman, who made the point that because that is quite close to the entrance, traffic is not going to be travelling at high speed. Nevertheless, it's going to be coming off a road. So if we do need further signage or, or traffic calming, we can look at that and deal with that under condition. Thank you, Chair.
I was just going to say, and will we make that a condition going forward, that these discussions will take place?
I think I may, Chair. So what we've got at the moment is the, the condition that Ian's sort of referred to about the existing proposal, which is the tactile, tactile crossing. If members didn't feel that that quite went sort of far enough and there was something sort of further than what I would suggest is that if you mind, it's obviously to approve the application. It was done so with kind of delegated powers to, to fill us the, the relevant officer to sort of agree that condition before the decision notice was issued. And we'd obviously then engage, engage in further discussions with, with Gleesons over that and, and the highway authority ultimately.
councillor Woodley?
Excuse my ignorance, but a tactile crossing, can we define that, please?
Sorry, Chairman, there's just too much jargon in our, our business. A tactile crossing is where you have. Sorry, Chairman, there's just too much jargon in our, our business. A tactile crossing is where you have, it's a little bit like a dropped curve. So in the footway, the level of the pavement will, will go down and you'll have a series of uh, pavement blocks which have got like little, little bobbles on. And basically it's so that particularly those who might have restricted vi- uh, vision, um, but, but any of us can actually feel that they're about to be at a point where they can cross the road. Um, but as I say, we can, we can look uh further at the exact nature of the crossing.
Councillor Broughton?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, apologies if it is in the report and I haven't seen it. Is, what is the combined total of the two already approved applications? Is it the same number as this application or more or less?
Uh, it is a little less. It is forty-six on the northern part, twenty on the bottom, so a total of sixty-six. And the current application is a total of eighty-nine.
Councillor Rizard?
Hopefully, uh, you, you've mentioned, um, in your report. And I'm a little bit concerned if we look back at the site map of the two areas, which are classed as private drives, particularly the one where I, I kind of worry whether our refuge trucks may be able to access those, those roads from the main road. And, and yeah, I know you mentioned that it was to be established what kind of roads these would be. Uh, who is going to be up heap for these roads?
Uh, I, I guess the most straightforward answer to that, councillor, is that ultimately the roads would be wide enough. It's been designed to the standard of the highway authority, Lincolnshire County Council. They have their standard design guide as, as every highway authority does, that does take into account widths of road, that does make sure that vehicles can pass along them. Um. And it's absolutely fine. And, and as Ian's just pointed out, we've also consulted the waste department. And again, there's no concern. So hopefully that adds sufficient comfort to you in the, in that regard.
I presume that these roads would be adopted by the highways.
I think it's highly likely that they probably would be, yes.
Just one further question, again, going back to the site map. So, uh, yeah, just one further question. The children's play area is pretty close to the, to the pond lake overflow. Is there going to be a, a fence put around that part of the lake? Do we know?
Uh, thank you, yes. That, that is a comment which often comes up. In fact, it's fairly standard practice um, to make these a, a family recreation area and have planting and that kind of thing. Um, but, um, although it doesn't appear in the plans, um, we can, uh, secure when we come to the details of the actual play equipment. What they often put in is, is a sort of a knee rail fence, like a one foot high fence going around it. Um, it's often considered not necessary if members were particularly concerned about that. That is something we could obviously take away and have a look at.
Okay, so I think at this point we are, or we have moved over into the area where uh, we're open for discussion. I really want there to be a good discussion. If there's anybody got any queries, feels they haven't had enough information, I would ask you to please ask the officers for clarification to, so that you understand that, um, and that going forward, we don't have any problems with uh, not having asked questions earlier. So please ask away. Councillor Welbury?
Thank you, Chair. I think it's important that we consider the quality of life, not just, uh, the, um, the number of homes that need to be built. So my question is, um, when it comes to open spaces, uh, what's the percentage um, regarding the previous development as opposed to the development that is on the table today? And has the area decreased or increased? Um, because like I say, it's important that we build homes that are fit to live in and not create slum conditions by too many houses being close together with no open spaces. Thank you.
Um, a couple of points there. Uh, I think it's fairly similar in terms of the open space provision to the previous approvals. We're hopefully going to, going to get a plan up that we showed before that did the comparison. Um. I certainly think it would be unfair of us to describe this development as a, as a slum development. And, and ultimately that is something that we do take into consideration in, in design. I think when we talk about design, I think people always just assume that's us considering the actual look of the houses, but actually for ourselves, design goes much further than that. It's the layout of the site, it's the provision of open space, it's landscaping. So in the opinion of officers, this does comply with the local plan requirements. Um, we think it's an appropriate scheme. Ultimately, I guess that is subjective to some degree. Um, but in terms of the open space, it's comparative to what was there before. So we're not, if your concerns are that this approval is lessening the development, then I, I, I would suggest that it's probably not.
Can I come back? Yeah, thank you for that. I don't mean a slum as in, you know, I mean, the fact that the density is so close together that it becomes, uh, peo- kids playing on the street, lots of street furniture, lots of cars, that creates a slim, slum type condition over time, not when it's first built. And we, you know, have an opportunity to actually improve people's lives and, and that's what I'm concerned about.
Like, like I say, councillor, you've obviously seen, there's, there's quite a lot of sort of consideration in that within the report. It's, it's a fairly detailed report before you. In the opinion of officers, the density, the layout is acceptable and it would achieve a suitable quality designer. I, I, I would agree with you. We don't look to approve housing where there's no public open space, where there's no ability or private space as well. You know, we, we do look to achieve a high enough quality of design. And in the opinion of officers, we, we consider that is met. So that's a bit of a comparative plan. Obviously, it's slightly misleading due to the, the colours. Obviously, on the, the right hand side is the, the previous approval. On the left hand side was proposed. Obviously, the green area in the main is a lot of it's sort of private garden space. Um, but I think one of the sort of key areas is that one of the, is the sort of the southeast part of the site. Obviously, there was uh, sort of quite significant houses there. That is predominantly the main, the main sort of green area. But there are other green areas located through the, through the site. So in our opinion, yeah, we're not creating, or the applicants not proposing who are sort of slum conditions. They are proposing a site that has green space running through it. Um, it's not just stuck out on a limb. It runs through the, the sort of the kind of the whole design and fabric of the site. So we're, we're quite content with that.
Chairman, if I can just add, just add for clarification, um, uh, on councillor Welbury's point. Um, the crucial difference in the map that I showed you of the two, uh, compare, that's the landscape plan of the current proposal, um, is that on the previous proposal, the area which is now, uh, the attenuation pond, that was for attenuation purposes. It was shown in green because there was a system of storage crates underneath it. Now, that's been avoided because those things basically can, can, can gum up. It wasn't considered, uh, optimal in this one. But that open space would sometimes on the existing approvals be dry. Sometimes it would actually have water in it. It wouldn't be usable in the same way. So I just point that out for, for, for clarification purposes. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Woodliffe?
Uh, thank you, Chairman. Uh, just wondered whether or not we were happy that the play area is, is bang next door to the atten- the attenuation pond, given the, the attraction of water to children and its potential dangers. I just wondered whether that's, um, that's a safety aspect is being considered by the officers. And also wondered what exactly is this play area going to be? But that's, I suppose, a matter for the developer. I presume that's, that's their option, isn't it? Thank you very much, Chairman.
Uh, through, through you, Chairman, I can, I can take that one. Um, as far as what the, uh, actual equipment will be, that is subject to a condition, uh, should you approve it. Um, it would not be left down to the developer. That would be a matter for the developer to agree with this council. Um, as far as safety is concerned, as I said in response to another councillor a little earlier, um, it, it is perfectly standard practice to put, um, recreational areas for grownups as well as for, uh, children um, in close proximity, uh, to, uh, uh, attenuation ponds. Uh, the important thing is to make sure that that is done in a way which is safe in terms of the design. Uh, and as I said earlier, we can put in, for example, a, a knee high, knee high fence, that kind of thing. Ultimately, an attenuation pond is an attenuation pond. And if it's going to be live, there will be a pond there. Uh, but we've got plenty of examples in development around Boston where we have followed this pattern um, quite successfully, uh, in existing development. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Woodliffe?
Uh, thank you, Chairman. I was interested to hear that, that council actually will be, well, the officer will be, um, conditioning the, the nature of the play area. Because I think about, I look in my ward and the play area tends to be one swing, one nodding donkey and one seat. So let's hope that it's, um, this, uh, council development or council overview actually will provide a bit more than just one nodding donkey, one little slide and one sweet seat.
I all heartedly agree.
Thank you, Chairman.
Austin?
Um, thank you, um, Chairman. Um. I would like to think that when these are built out, they are not as bad as we are fearing. And I think in very near to where I live, we have Heron Park. All right, a different developer. But when I come to look at it now, you know, given a few years maturity, it's seems to be well laid out. That I've not known of any problem with the attenuation pond. At this rate, of course, with this dry weather, there won't be much in it anyway, but we don't know about that. Um. So I feel reasonably comfortable on this. I think it's well, well laid out. Um, one thing there was no mention of at all in the report, and I would hope it's taken for granted, that if this is approved, then there is a construction management plan, please. That is essential. Not only does that mean on the site, but it means all the construction vehicles coming to and from that site. As a lot of the roads are not always a very appropriate for big construction vehicles with heavy loads of soil. And if land has to be built up, then there's a huge amount that will have to be built, brought in. So I'm looking ahead that if we do approve this, then these things are, I hope, taken for granted. Thank you.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, it's an excellent point, councillor. I fully agree. And if you look within the committee papers, condition for, uh, within the recommended sweeter conditions already seeks to achieve that, because I would completely agree wholeheartedly with, uh, with the points you raise. So that would secure a construction management plan to be submitted. We'd obviously consult with highway authority to confirm the satisfaction of his details. But I hope that gives you, um, I hope that allays that, that concern for you. Thank you, Chair.
This councillor Scoot?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I've obviously read this from cover to cover and done a little bit of research. Uh, if I can start on page forty-nine, please. You mentioned Fishtough Manor. Uh, and I think your statement was if there was any damage to it, it would be considerably minor. Could you define considerably minor for me, please?
Well, the threshold in MPPF for harm to listed buildings talks about the level of its significance. Usually after total demolition, anything that will be significant would usually be works that actually physically affect and actually alter the building itself. So an extension to it, converting it, re-roofing it, et cetera. In this instance, the reason why we consider it to be sufficiently minor is that there's no actual physical works taking place to the building itself. I think we've set out in the report kind of what our views are with regards to the impact on the setting. I think it probably is setting at, at sort of best that would be the impact. There have been concerns raised, you know, I think it's, it's related to in the report. Um, the owners of Fishtough Manor have raised concerns about how the development would be, would affect the property in terms of drainage and I believe there's a historic basement there that they are concerned with flood. But the reality is there's, there's no empirical evidence to, to, to support that. Um. We've got a drainage scheme before us. We've consulted, um, there's no concerns, as you've seen from any consultancy relation to flood risk. We have these extra conditions secured. We have consulted with our conservation officer as a grade two listed building. The statutory requirements, this is only really for the council's own conservation officer to be consulted. They have raised no concerns with the proposal. Notwithstanding, we have nonetheless gone to Historic England, which is kind of above and beyond what the regulations tell us to, to do. They're not a statutory consultancy, but we've gone to them anyway and they've come back with no concerns. So I think to conclude that any harm from, from a development that's semi sort of screened from view, that doesn't physically affect or alter any of the fabric or actually touches the building itself, to conclude that the harm would be anything more than that, I think would be fairly unreasonable of us an authority based upon the evidence that's, that's presently before us.
Thank you for that. Uh, on page ninety-four, uh, we have mentioned a walking distances from Fishtough as the crow flies. Well, with all due respect, none of the residents of Fishtough are crows, so they won't be walking in direct lines. Um, my property is the last in Fishtough Ward. Uh, from me to Rochford Tower is a mile. From there by road to Gasefield Road is another mile and a half. Now, Fishtough do not have any convenience stores, any shops in the actual village. Therefore, if you are walking, the nearest convenience store is on Priory Road, which is a mile and a half. If you then want to get to a post office, that's another mile. From my house to the town bridge is another mile. If you then wanted to go to, say, Asda or downtown, you're looking at another two or three miles. So, so walking is out. So I can think you can safely say no one's going to be walking to do the shopping. Now, on page forty-eight, um, highways have mentioned they see a minimum of forty-seven trips being done at peak hours in the morning and evening for education. Um, I actually look on the government, uh, website, on the statistics, statistics website that the government produced, and the last figures were produced in twenty twenty-three. According to that, thirty-four, thirty-four percent of all homes now own two or more cars. So let's be generous, let's say two cars. That's a total of sixty cars. Another forty-four percent own one car. That's another thirty-nine. So that's ninety-nine cars at least on the development. Now, for educational trips, it states that one point five educational trips are carried out by each person, not car, each person per day. Now, with my maths, that comes out about a hundred and fifty-eight, not forty-seven. Even if you divide it by two, that's a lot more. So my concern is with safety with, with that. Having lived on Freeston Road and Eastwood Road, um, I can assure you, people do speed down there. And I've been trying to get traffic calming measures on there for ages. And according to LCC, councillor Evans, you won't be getting any more speed bumps. They don't do them anymore. So you won't be getting that. Um. In my heart of hearts, I do appreciate the need for affordable housing. And this may be controversial. If this development was in a different part of the ward, I would probably have no problems with it. But for the actual style of the properties, I don't think it will be keeping with the village and the density. Um, I'm sorry, no.
Would you like to come back there, Nick?
Yeah, just, just a couple of points, uh, Chair, for me to, in, and it's, I won't go into kind of the, the, the density, because I think we've, we've, we've sort of covered that. Uh, and the design ultimately, it's a subjective matter. Um, it's more just on the, the points that you raised, councillor, about the, you know, sort of car ownership sustainability. And I think there's a few things I would just say. I- in terms of whether or not this is a sustainable location or not, the reality is, as, as a council, you, Members, we adopt a plan that categorically says that this is a sustainable location. It is in the settlement hierarchy. It sits in the second category after Boston itself. So the question of whether or not this Fishtough is a sustainable location in some degrees is a bit of a moot point because we, we allocate it as a location that is. There's a reason why we allocate, um, why the top part of the site is allocated for housing in the local plan. So if we're to sort of latterly sort of come back and suggest that it's not really sustainable, then, you know, not really sustainable, then, you know, ultimately, that is your decision. But I think you'd find yourself on very, very difficult grounds trying to defend that. I know you make reference to the various distances away. Would people walk? Sustainable transport's a bit more than just people being able to walk. You have to take into account people cycling, you have to take into account bus routes, all of which you could do. I mean, I know you said it could be 2.5 miles, it could be 1.5, it could be three miles. In a planning sense, they would be considered to be acceptable distances. Now, whether people chose to do it or not, well, that's entirely down to individual preferences. But if we sort of suggested that this wasn't a sustainable location, people couldn't use sustainable modes of transport, I'm afraid I'd have to disagree with you. There are options there. It is then just down to the individuals, whether or not they choose to do so. And again, suppose car ownership, I mean, if we're making a, I'd say almost every application that kind of comes before you is going to result in an increase in traffic. I think as an authority, if we're basically saying we're not going to determine developments that wouldn't result in an increase in traffic levels, then I think you'd find we'd probably be determining about 10 applications a year. So most developments do. The question is not will there be an increase in traffic? The question is, what are the implications of that increase in traffic from a safety and from a capacity perspective? Now, as officers, we're not going to sit here and suggest to you that we are hire engineers. I wouldn't be so two-faced and bold and to do that. But that's why an applicant does provide a very detailed transport assessment, which the applicant in this case has done. And that's not been done on the back of a cigarette packet. That's been done by a perfectly competent company. But again, we don't just take that on face value as officers. You know, this is not a case of an applicant puts something in, we just sort of blindly go, oh, well, it must be okay then. That's why we consult with the relevant consultees, who are the experts. And in this case, matters a highway, like them or not, that falls to the Highway Authority, which is Lincolnshire County Council. And they have no concerns. So I do accept, will this development lead to more traffic? Undoubtedly, any housing development would do. But the question isn't will it lead to an increase in traffic, it's will that be harmful? And at the moment, ultimately, again, it's your decision, members, as I said to you previously last time. What you do with this advice is entirely down to you. But you have no evidence before you, other than purely anecdotal evidence, that there would be harm arising from this. And when you've got a very detailed submission the applicant has put together, and when you've got a statutory consultancy who has no vested interest in it, same as ourselves, they're completely neutral down the middle. And when they have no concerns and they agree with that assessment, I would suggest that unless you've got something in terms of you commissioned your own transport statement or assessment that counts as anything, then to simply dismiss all of that on anecdotal evidence is not an avenue that I would recommend in any way, shape or form you go down. Because defending that at an appeal will be a very, very challenging effort for you. And I don't think, in my opinion, that the council could do. And then just a final matter on speeding. People speed on roads, I do accept they shouldn't do. But that's not a matter that's for the planning system to control. That we have to assume in arriving at our planning judgements, if a road is a 30 mile an hour road, you have to assume in a planning sense that it will be driven at the speed limit, same for 40, same for 60. If people don't, and I do appreciate people don't, and might have attended one or two speed awareness courses myself, that's a matter for the police. But that's outside of the controls of planning to control. You have to assume that the legal speed limits will be driven. And if there's any other issues beyond that, that is not planning. Planning is not here to control every single matter in day-to-day life. The MPPF legislation is very clear. That would be a police matter. Thank you, Chair.
No, I do appreciate it actually being designated for building. But it's the density for me, it's the quantity on there. I've got the problem with.
Counselor Woodliffe.
Thank you, Chairman. I have an admission to make, actually. I just remembered, I'm a member of the Lincolnshire Wildlife Trust. I pay £3 a month to this particular trust. I don't sit on any committees. I've never been to any of their meetings. I haven't visited any of their sites. But I have to declare that. And relating to that, I note that it has a holding objection. Earth is that. What is a holding objection? I know it says something about it later on. I don't understand personally what they're talking about.
I don't know if to help us.
Yes, Chairman. Slightly controversial answer this. The Lincolnshire Wildlife Trust have a habit of putting in holding objections. You will note from the planning application number B23 that this one has been with us for some time. The Wildlife Trust objected because the application in its view did not meet the requirements of the new National Biodiversity Net Gain Regulations. But the new National Biodiversity Net Gain Regulations came into effect covering applications submitted after February 2024. And this one was submitted earlier. Now, when we contacted the Wildlife Trust, they said, and I think there's a letter to this effect on the file, that as far as they're concerned, that didn't really matter, because they would expect a developer to fulfill the obligations of the new act, even though they were excused from following it. Now, the actual delivery of biodiversity net gain, I won't go into the details now. There is quite a significant level of delivery, and that is covered in the main report before you. But that is what that holding objection was about. And unfortunately, whilst it is there, we can't take it into account because the Wildlife Trust's comments were basically against the law. But not that they were against the law in making the comment, but the law required different things to what they were asking for.
Thank you. Oh.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure whether this question can be answered. But I understand that from fellow committee members, density is one of the main issues with this development. Is there any history as to why the original planning application weren't carried out, and there was then a further increase in the number of homes? And could we be sitting here in three years' time with a further increase in the number of homes on this particular site?
I don't think we've got an answer for you in regards to why the previous schemes weren't implemented. They just weren't. There may be business reasons for that, but we're not sort of privy to it. Ultimately, I believe that the reason why you've got a different scheme before you is that ultimately, it's now a different applicant and a different developer. So their wants, needs, et cetera, for the site have differed from the previous applicant, which there's nothing fundamentally inappropriate with that. But in terms of why it wasn't specifically built out, it could be a myriad of reasons. It could be economics to do with the business itself. But we'd just be purely speculating, counsel. And ultimately, it's not particularly relevant. What's relevant is the proposal before you, acceptable or not? What happens with the previous consent to material considerations in terms of what it means for numbers? But why they weren't implemented is not particularly relevant.
Yeah, just to add to that, from Nick's point of view, I've had this a number of times over the years at committees. I suppose the simplest way I put it is that this isn't a beauty parade. Yes, there are some previous applications on this site that were approved. That is material, as Nick said. But this must be judged on its own merits. So I suppose in simple terms, what I'm saying is, you don't just refuse it because you prefer the other one. You have to understand what the harm arising from this one would be.
Okay, everybody. I get the feeling that we're coming to the end of our discussion period. Just like to remind you all that this is your last chance to ask anything, clarify anything, bring it out into the open. The next couple of minutes is your last chance. So if you want to say anything, please say it. Counselor Woodliffe.
Chairman, I'd like to move the recommendation as given to approve this planning application subject to the conditions. Yes, subject to the conditions laid down by the officers and all the matters considered in this meeting. And I look for a second. Thank you.
You want to speak? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to say that when you consider this, the previous approved applications, the highways have no objections. The Witherham Fourth Drainage Board, who are the experts in all of this, have no objections. With full section 106 agreements in place, I will be supporting this. I'll be happy to second it.
So we have a proposal and second. So all those in favour? And those against? Any abstentions?
I just confirmed we have eight voting in favour, two voting against. We have no abstentions, which is correct. That's 10 members all voting. So that would be carried.
So I announce that that application has been carried. Thank you, everybody. Thank you to the public. Your behaviour has been exemplary. Thank you very much.